Here.
Moore?
Here.
Janer?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Next, we'll go to an interview for the Environmental Advisory Board. Sarah Nelson. Sarah, are you here or on the phone?
He's on the phone.
Okay.
What am I doing? Yep, it was locked out, sorry.
No worries. Sarah, can you hear us?
Yep.
You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Environmental Committee?
Um, so my name is Sarah Nelson. I have been in a booth for Walt Enterprises for about five years now. Uh, I work in the lab. I'm a microbiologist there, so I have a background in biology. And I have been passionate about making the earth a better place for about two years now. Unfortunately, I didn't really come to grips or... I should have done it a long time ago, but I didn't. And I'm pretty thirsty about that, but now I'm posting environmental facts every day and just trying to educate the public. And I'd really like to get, um, more involved with the community.
Okay, questions for Sarah?
Sarah, this is Dan. I appreciate your making the application for this, uh, board. It's a very important board. And, uh, you're never too late to sign up for one of our boards or commissions either, so thank you for making the application.
Thank you.
Sarah, Sarah, I appreciate you taking initiative, as Councilman Moore said, um, and making an application. I've been thinking about it a lot in going to, um, our committee meetings. And I think one thing to impress upon you is we're always looking for, uh, board and committee members who are willing to not only voice their opinion, but, um, to talk about solutions and make recommendations. Would you say you're, you're willing to kind of share those thoughts and opinions and step up to the plate in that way?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your apology. All right. All right, next, we'll go to the presentation of the 2021 Saturday in the Park event at Grandview Park.
Mayor and Council, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, Saturday in the Park may look a little bit different this year with some Grandview Park, uh, water tower construction. So we've been doing event planning with Dave Bernstein and Saturday in the Park Committee. Dave is here to provide a brief presentation and proposal for this year's event, so at that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
All right, thank you for, um, hearing us out here. I'm with Joe Craig as well. Uh, and, uh, we've been both working on Saturday in the Park for seemingly decades. And I don't think we've been here regarding a beer garden for like thirty years, so, um... This, uh, this year, we need to look at, um, making some changes, I guess, relating to the water tower, unrelated to COVID or anything. Obviously, uh, COVID is going to be a driver of what date we can actually pull off Saturday in the Park. But right now, we're discussing, uh, having it on, um, on July 3rd is a date that we're tentatively holding. Uh, this is the map of, um, of Grandview Park. And, uh, the issue we're faced with is the late start of the water tower demolition, uh, which I guess was supposed, you know, was supposed to be in the fall, uh, which now is probably going to be in March or April, I believe. Uh, and the pending, um, surcharge is going to basically wipe out half of the beer garden that we normally have and make it unusable because it wipes out all the level area that we have that would be the service area. Uh, so our request, given the, that disruption, is to fence the park because, uh, the service area has to be delineated by a fence. Uh, to fence the entire park and allow us to serve in the entire park and then delineate this area that's in orange. If you can see it there, along with the kids' own area that we normally have, as a family-friendly area, uh, which is alcohol-free. Um, generally, the premise since we came here thirty years ago was to provide a scenario where you had a balance between a family-friendly environment and a, um, uh, an area where we serve reasonable, you know, reasonable amounts of beer, uh, because that's the only way to pay for the event. And it's always consisted that way. I will tell you, it's pretty obvious to anyone that goes to the festival that, uh, over the years, a lot, there's a lot of carry-in product that people bring into the park. Uh, so down in front by the stage and that whole area anyway, uh, it's, uh, there's a lot of consumption of, uh, beer and alcohol that we don't sell. Uh, and part of the reason for that is we're unable to control the park, uh, because you can come in from any, any point. And, uh, in part, the fence will allow us to better control that, but more importantly, allow us to be able to serve in the entire park less the, the family and kids' area. And I don't know that we're, we're super wed to anything specifically on this map. We're certainly open to discussion. This was, uh, something that came about in brainstorming with, um, with, uh, city staff and, um, at least initially. And, uh, so I guess that's why we're here, to present this and get feedback. And look for some workable scenario that we can both have the festival and clearly have it at Grandview Park. We're not going to have it anywhere but Grandview Park, obviously. It wouldn't be the same. Um, and we really plan on having it summer at some point.
And so are you going to have limited entrance then?
Yeah, we would have an entrance here, uh, where it's, everywhere it's green. So we'd have three entrances, one off of 24th at Grandview, uh, one up here at the top of the hill, um, where the road, at the peak of the road, because you don't want people trying to go in there all the way at the top and then having to come back down. And then one back here behind the bandshell where we'd have both our normal access that we use for the stage, but we'd also make sure we had a, uh, you know, patron access there as well, um, so that people coming from that direction could get in. We, we feel that those really cover the flow of, uh, patrons that we see, um, year after year, the directions that people approach the park from.
So what do you ask a city for?
The fencing.
Just permission to do fence it?
No, to pay for the fencing.
I thought it would be... I think it would be just...
And this would be the construction chain link?
Yeah, six-foot-high temporary. Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the issue is we, there's a lot of expense that goes into it on top of the fencing, um, to be able to deal with this, like, you know, the, the management of it and also the, the management of that entire area. So it's not like we're going to necessarily save money by doing this. Um, but I guess our request is that, you know, if there's a way to include that as part of the construction budget, uh, we'd be perfectly content to do it the way we've done it for the last twenty-nine years, if we could. But we can't.
Dave, do you anticipate any additional security necessary for...
Yeah, we would for sure have to ramp up. That, that's where our additional expenses...
I was going to say, I would think that would be a little more significant.
Yeah, and we're going to have to spend some money, I think that we were planning on spending, to, to figure out with, with Matt and Parks and Rec a spot that we can set everything up, because we're not, I mean, we, we poured a pad a few years ago. You know, we, we put a decent amount of money into the park. I mean, most recently, the irrigation and the seeding of the, um, of the bowl, uh, we split. Um, and we put, we poured a pad at our expense up in, up below the water tower that's going to get torn out and ultimately replaced, but it's going to be a couple of years before that goes back in. Um, because we need somewhere stable and level to, to set all that up. Uh, you know, the issue up there is level, not so much the, the territory. There's an awful lot of fall.
Dave, I, I think, under these circumstances, you need to have that flexibility. And you've always, you and your team have always been excellent in pre-planning so that it really runs smoothly. I'm just wondering, do we, do we have just a rough idea, estimate of what we'd be talking about for the fence?
Not, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Not to exceed fifteen...
I think it would come at a little bit less than that, and that would be set up the week before, um, and then removed the week after.
Okay, and then, um, I'm just wondering, and, and I haven't thought this through, but I'm just wondering, just as a, as an aside, whether some of that fencing could be, might benefit the park in a permanent way as well, but...
I think that's a rental.
This would be, this would be rental, temporary fence.
No, but I mean, for the cities, it's part of it, if there's, if there's, if there are portions that could be permanent. Maybe not. I haven't looked at the plans. I haven't even thought about it, except just wondering if part of it, but that'd be for the...
You're saying long-term and...
Yeah, that'd be for the city to take a look at anyway, but I, I have no problem with your proposal.
Yeah, I, I would say that the, the, the cost of that fifteen, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars is primarily for it to show up and go away.
Okay.
Um, not so much for the fencing, so, I mean, if you guys had fencing needs, we could certainly broach that with them, but, but I think starting to buy fence would be a different program.
Well, I know, but that night, to that Douglas Street, I'm thinking, we're going to be fencing that anyway. Why would we not?
Just build a decorative? Is that what you're thinking?
We can talk about that, but anybody have a problem with what David and his group are proposing here?
I think it's a great idea.
And I talked a little bit with Joe about it and, and good points, Joe, that you raised as well. I, I, I don't have a problem.
And I think that the family area, by the way, is important to us and, and, um, it's always been since the beginning. And, uh, I also think that most families probably don't hang out right in front of the stage. Um, I know if I had young kids, I don't know that I'd be at seven o'clock at night taking them all the way down front.
Right.
Um, so this maybe puts a better balance on where, uh, people are, um, suited to their, uh, desires that day.
I'm trying to think too, looking at this map, is that going to affect where you have some of those, like, stands where people can buy memorabilia and stuff? Is that going to be where the kids' zone is?
It's, it's going to scramble a lot of stuff up. Uh, we're really going to have to figure out, like, where we look to put service areas, whether we put smaller ones in. Um, we have a really large semi right now that we serve out of. Um, I don't know that we'll be able to use that. We may have to go for smaller ones. Uh, we're, we're working with, you know, our beer partner.
Yeah. Well, I would just say thanks for working with city staff and continuing to do this and bringing it forward.
But just thought I'd show you guys, we're always cutting edge here. This is a 2050-year picture of Saturday in the Park. And Bernie Sanders was there with his mittens even in this picture.
Back in the day.
Pick out of that. Well, we appreciate your consideration and, um, we're, we're open to feedback. Um, we've been working with Matt and Bob.
Well, and I think the big thing too is, um, depending on who you hire, I know you've brought on a lot of officers, but just getting their feedback, you know, looking at Kirkpatrick and just getting their feedback of what would keep it most secure.
Absolutely. I, I do believe that there will be some actual improvements and benefits in this regard, just because it will prevent the carry-on, um...
Yeah.
Into the park that we've, we've had in the past as a, as a byproduct of this, and that may be a positive overall for consumption.
Dave, I'm not sure I understood completely. I just want to make sure I, I do. Once you fence, if we fence the park, you're still going to have a designated beer garden in there? Or you're going to allow them to walk all the way?
All the way around.
Define the perimeter that way.
That is the beer garden.
You got to define it by your, you got to define your liquor license by your, by a, a location.
We'd basically be reversing what we do now. Instead of having a designated beer garden...
Be a higher space.
You'd have a designated family.
You'd have a designated family area instead, because we can't designate an area that could be a beer... I mean, we could take the entire area in front of the stage and designate it as a beer garden. That's the only large area that we have left. Which I know seems maybe counterintuitive, but I do believe by fencing the entire place and controlling entry, uh, by looking at people and, you know, as opposed to saying, no, no coolers, no pats, no bringing booze in your, in your tote bag.
Sure.
Um, we can say that, but we're only so effective as enforcing it. Whereas if we walk people through three different entrances, we're going to be a lot more effective at enforcing it.
I agree. The only thing that I question is, is that okay as far as you understand?
Just like going outside at the Tyson Event Center, as long as you define the perimeter.
Right.
Yeah, but they haven't, I, I didn't know that they let people under eighteen walk freely in there unless they're with parents. But maybe that's changed.
Uh, I couldn't address that specifically, but I could go to your first question and talk about the security. Anytime that you would fence that perimeter, it's, it would be a benefit to the security side of the house, so we're going to...
I agree.
We would be in favor of it. My understanding of the liquor license is just exactly what you've, you've all said, is that, that designated area then becomes the allowable area for, for consumption.
But isn't the, doesn't the law require that if you're under the age of twenty-one, you can be with parents, but...
I know that that applies to a bar. I'd have to, I'd have to look in the law books to be able to answer that specifically, but...
That's been a city policy, but, uh, Iowa Beverage Control allows, allows for this. It's been a...
They do.
They have to because the fair does. You can walk around the fair.
We take concessions to that with Awesome Biker Nights and the old Band Blast we used to have, or whatever they were called. Uh, Hard Rock is an example.
Okay, that's the only concern I had. If you say it's legal, it's legal.
And our intention would be also to wristband and, um...
Thanks, Mark.
To, to wristband and then, uh, only serve to people with wristbands.
Sure.
And then it would be incumbent upon them not to serve minors, and I think...
Yes.
It'd be better for us to watch that than to watch all the, there's so much carry-on. I mean, we've...
Yeah, I'm sure you're right.
A lot of bottles.
Okay, I've never been to, I've never been to...
I need your name and address first.
Oh, Angela Warner, CC Iowa, 50103. Um, I just have a comment.
No, I need an address.
Oh, address, thirteen fifteen West Twentieth.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, uh, for comment on that, that would be a great help, I believe, especially agree with, uh, um, security part of it for the fence. Uh, to go furthermore, you could probably just say, uh, like, instead of having the beer garden reverse that and you could put like a, have a ring maybe for like kids' area or something, as they started with the VIP area in some years before, something like that. And that would help out security for entrances to go under the ring of it, and the whole place being open like that. Two, such alcohol would be a better benefit for everybody, and it's not so packed, and it gets, uh, rather dangerous sometimes when they get all the people together and get drinking. So it'd be able to expand them out, not so much close quarters. So I think that'd be a very great benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else to be heard?
Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks, guys. We're going to go to the consent agenda, which is items four through fourteen E. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is asked for by a council member. If you come to the podium to speak on any item, please state your name and address so it can be used for follow-up. If you want to speak on item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
Four is a reading of the City Council minutes of January twenty-first and twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Five is a resolution scheduling a hearing on the maximum property tax dollars. Six is a resolution designating Dan Moore as the City Council Representative on the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to just make some remarks, if I may. Um, I appreciate your, uh, confidence in me to continue on with what we've started with the, um, Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. It's going to be a very important committee. I'm excited to be the representative of the council. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, groups that are, uh, we have a very diverse community. There are a lot of groups that are being represented in the eleven-member committee, and we're charged with, um, developing equity and inclusion strategies. And that's a, a mighty charge, but we're up for the task with the members. I know that council had interviewed and, and appointed to the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. Um, so we're going to do everything we can to enhance the connections with citizens and businesses and encourage, uh, resident engagement within the community. I want to add, and we've talked about this with the, with the representatives from the various, um, populations in the community, but it is also, uh, one that, uh, we want to be mindful of with this committee going forward, and that's, uh, persons with disabilities. Uh, disabilities, uh, disability does not discriminate. Uh, disability can happen to any group, can happen to any person. And I know this from experience with a family member. Uh, I became, uh, very familiar with Craig Hospital in Colorado, um, with Madonna in Nebraska. And we're going to be mindful of our, uh, population of, of people with disabilities. And inclusive is just that. It's going to include, um, everyone. And Alex and I have talked about this. Um, Alex knows my background on it. Um, and our stories are, really, we have an interesting story between us. We really do. But that's just something I want to point out because we don't, you don't have, you know, we don't have a category for people with disabilities. But you can look at any one of these groups, you know, NAACP, unity in the community, Native American community, religious community, you know, Asian, Latino, uh, any one of those communities could have people with disabilities. So I, I want to point that out. Lastly, uh, I just want to let you know that we're having our first meeting of the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee tomorrow at noon, February second at noon. And the primary purpose will be for the election of the chairperson and the vice-chairperson of the committee. And then we'll get an update on our, uh, community inclusion liaison position hiring. And I trust that'll come from the city manager's office as far as the update and the report on that. So we're going to kick it off. We're excited. I'll give you reports back along the way this year. And, uh, I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure we do it right and that you will all be pleased with what we're doing. But I do welcome your input. I, I really do. If there's something we're not doing and we're not doing it timely, just give me a call, send me a text, whatever you need to do. So thank you for letting me make those comments. Thank you again for your confidence and my ability to, uh, represent all of you on this very important committee that we formed. Actually, we formed that October twelfth, twenty twenty. Not bad, just a little over ninety days. We've got the committee appointed, interviewed, appointed, and we've got our first meeting scheduled tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
Good, good luck. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing fire rescue to apply for a MURD spring grant for safety training equipment. B is a resolution adopting the CBD, CDBG, Small Business Grant Program for businesses impacted by COVID-19. C is a resolution accepting a methamphetamine drug hotspot grant from the Office of Drug Control Policy for the Police Department.
Hey, Mayor. Jill, would you mind just speaking a little bit to that grant, the application? And just so I can be a little more knowledgeable when I'm talking to maybe some small businesses? I, I think it's a great program, I just, for any media that's listening, anyone that's here, and I think for all of our knowledge when we're talking to individuals in the community, if you could just tell us a little bit about it and how we can utilize that?
Sure. Jill Waterside, Neighborhood Services Manager. Um, we will, once we have the online application available, we're going to do a big, um, media push at that time too, to make sure we get the word out, um, direct to businesses as well. Um, but this is federal CARES Act funding that comes through our office that is primarily used to assist those that are low-income in our community. And so the point of this program is to retain those jobs that are filled currently by low-income employees in our community with small businesses. Um, there have been a few programs like this created across the state and other cities. Um, we'd probably be the third or fourth in the state. And so the requirements are listed there, but it's up to ten thousand, um, per small business. It is, um, forgivable, or, um, well, forgivable, but also reimbursable, so we, um, reimburse as they move forward. Even if they apply and receive funds through the state's new program for bars and restaurants, they're still eligible for this program too. So that's kind of an important thing, um, to note also. Um, and so our staff will be putting together all the application information. It'll be all online. They'll be able to submit online. And then we'll review those applications and move forward from there.
Okay, yeah, and if you could work with Ann and her team and everyone, just to really make sure to push, because then we can put it through different social media channels or whatever it is. Obviously, you'll do a big media push, but just anything that we can know, deadlines, application, what's required, what's expected? I would appreciate that.
And I, I think we're on track to release all of that within the next week or two, so you'll see a big, big push on that.
Okay.
That they're up to ten thousand dollars?
Up to ten thousand, yep.
And I would also, I mean, you can see who received different CARES Act funding and previous allocations. I wonder if it's worth kind of noting, well, maybe who didn't get help or, you know, who was requesting help before, or, you know, checking in, or...
Absolutely.
Just anything we can do to be proactive. I think sometimes, um, and I, I'm not a small business owner, but I can only imagine how busy you are just trying to stay afloat, that sometimes getting these things in front of your face, you know, is secondary, even though it could really help a business, so just anything you can do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, will you make sure that you contact those merchants up on Pierce Street that were impacted? Thank you.
Civil penalties and suspensions, items A through, eight A through eight G are restrict, are resolutions scheduling hearings on a three-hundred-dollar civil penalty for violation of the cigarette laws by the following business. A, the Dollar General Store at ten thirty Riverside Boulevard. B is a fairway on forty forty War Eagle Drive. C is a Hy-Vee gas station at twenty-eight oh one Hamilton Boulevard. D is a come-and-go at eighteen twenty-one Hamilton Boulevard. E is a La Plazita Latina at thirteen hundred West Fourth Street. F is a PG Mini Mart at eight hundred Hamilton Boulevard. And G is a Hy-Vee Main Street at twenty-six eleven Pierce Street.
This is the part of the job that I'm always so disappointed in that our merchants don't get this. I, I'm curious, when you go out, I know you do a big sting. How many, as a percentage, were in compliance? We always hear the part of who's not in compliance. How many were in compliance? Do you have any idea?
It's usually about between eighty-five and ninety percent are compliant.
Okay, well, that's...
It just seems like it's a lot.
I did see, in reading this today, I felt like it, a lot.
How they do compliance checks most often is that they'll do a lot of them at one time and get them done because it, there's a, a state request that we do them. So we do them pretty quickly. You'll get a bunch, and then you won't get very many.
Yeah, no, I...
Okay, that's cool then, okay. Items eight, A, eight H through eight K, a resolution scheduling hearings on a five-hundred-dollar civil penalty for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws by the following business. H is Brew Morningside at Thousand Morningside Avenue. I is K and K Quick Corner at fourteen oh one Court Street. J is Ick and Nickel at forty-seven hundred Forty-first Street. K is the Select Mart at forty-one oh three Floyd Boulevard. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution directing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a joint cooperation agreement with SEDC. B is a resolution approving an assignment assumption of the agreements between the badgeral developer and the badgeral owner. Ten are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payments to Andritz Separation Technologies for Asset Renewal Phase One. B is a resolution authorizing payments to RE Pedrote for Asset Renewal Phase One. C is a resolution approving change order one and authorizing payment to KP Construction for the sixteen oh eight Pierce Street Storm Sewer Repair Project. Eleven are actions relating to properties. A is a resolution terminating the lease of the Northwest Iowa, Northwest Little League for Center Street Park. And B is a resolution proposing to lease Center Street Park to the West Side Little League and scheduling a hearing. Twelve is purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Grove's Emergency Lighting for Satina Push Bumpers and Wraps and Whelan Light Kits. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Caltech for hint mounts, Hava Center Council units, Eltron Scanner, Stalker Dual Radar Unit, and Stalker Rear Antennas. C is a resolution awarded purchaser, order to Ray O'Hearn for long gun and seat partitions. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Electronic Engineering for Pocket Printers. E is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Stu Hansen Dodge City Jeep for a grand, Jeep Grand Cherokee Laredo. F is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Stu Hansen Dodge City Jeep for two Ram fifteen-hundred short box four-by-four pickups. G is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Stu Hansen Dodge City Jeep for a Ram fifteen-hundred four-by-four pickup. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward. Fourteen are receipt of minutes. See the list come forward. Anybody have any questions on any of those items, please come forward. Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Hey, Ed.
Citizens, any citizens to be heard?
Hey, Ed, do you mind hanging out for a second?
Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns.
Wait, there's a lady.
Angela Warner in thirteen fifteen West Twentieth Street, Sioux City. I've never been to these meetings, like I said before, but on their dot org site, can you say a concern that has nothing to do with this agenda now? Just to get it said?
Yep.
Okay, 'cause I think I'll do it that way on that, first, as one of their subjects, so I'll be looking for it.
No, you can...
No, you can do it right now.
You can share anything. Sorry, I misunderstood you. You can share anything.
I can do it right now, okay, and if I have to be on agenda topic or not.
No, 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 go ahead.
As far as for property taxes and the meeting, I got, I, for my, uh, what has happened to me here, my accident, and I do a lot of walking and ride the bus right now because you have a hindrance, I...
hundred mile license. I find that the city walks and even if the city does, even for the city, the city parks for the, like, the bike trail, coming up on corners, those aren't, the mounds aren't done. Okay. Now then, I don't know if there's property taxes somehow. We could wrap the city into, I don't know, fines if they don't do it, or I don't know if they give property taxes up, but then the city comes back, hires a contractor. I don't know. Something come up with a way to help people with that. Because I found myself just walking in the street.
Are you talking about snow? Are you talking-
Talking about snow and ice, yeah.
Oh, so when they push the snow around the corner, it blocks the sidewalk?
And then, like, okay, example, over by Charlie's Wine Spirits, that bridge there, and then on the, as you're heading, what would be east, you know, up the hill. And then over on the right side there, you have the, this area for the bike trail, and it comes off the bridge. Now, they had, would they have used their little ATV, whatever, you know, and they pushed it, but they pushed it all the way to that curb and they let it sit there. Then that made it cross that crosswalk, you know, that's something with the city, I don't know. But then to go furthermore, the people in the city for the properties to maybe do some, I don't know, raising the property taxes, maybe combining something?
We have, they got 72 hours in it, but they do it by a complaint basis. So you need to phone it. When you see an area that needs to be addressed, you need to phone.
Okay, so then maybe-
Booty phone, ladies.
Maybe would it be a better idea just to maybe voice that, a reminder for specific-
You got an address? You got an address in specific you wrote down?
I do. I have an address. It's, well, I mean, my address, but the-
No, I'm talking about where you want some, some attention to a sidewalk.
It's-
You're talking about that.
It's West 19th, West 19th, all the way from, I'll start at center down to-
Go back and talk to that gentleman right back there. Aren't you in charge of that, David?
Who was that? Right here?
I can get it back to you.
Hey, well, I could too, but hey.
Well-
Okay, I will. I'll talk. I just wanted to adjourn. Cause I just found this out.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor and council, both go out on social media and remind property owners of their obligations that they have.
Well, there's all kinds of corners that aren't done, I can tell you that.
So they have a 72-hour window though, once the snow process has happened, the cleaning to open those areas up and get their sidewalks done. Okay.
I think they actually have-
The nice thing is after you open up, Ed's plows come and put about two feet up there.
I know. I want those attachments. I think that tops it.
I think after the snow stops, the cessation of snow, they've got maybe 24 hours or 12? 24?
I missed a question.
Pardon me?
I missed a question.
After the snow stops, I don't think it's 72. I think that's too long. I think it's either 12 or 24. I'd have to look at the code to be sure. 24 hours.
Okay.
But once the snow stops, there's then 24, the sidewalks are supposed to be clean. And you can call the PD and the PD will assign it to the inspection services guy and he'll go out and post, he'll talk to them or put a post on their door. And that helps a great deal.
Well, PD has a hard time seeing the snow, the vehicles on Jackson Street that are filtered, buried in snow that you haven't tagged yet, Captain.
There's a lot of them.
You're not even looking for them.
They're working on it. Right.
Don't kid me.
The former captain was correct in his explanation.
You guys aren't even looking at them, or you would, you would be blind not to see them. But anyway, what else do you have, Pete, for the good of you?
No, not a thing. I think it's probably important, it is important to note that it's Black History Month and any opportunity you get to, to-
Hey, you got your first meeting.
Address that issue you're going to? Or is somebody going to-
Well, no, I was just saying it's their first meeting tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
So that's-
Well, not only that, NAACP fundraising for the scholarships. I'm sure you've all sent your personal checks in by now, haven't you?
Mm-hmm.
Dan was covering mine.
Yeah, I gotta give you the card back.
Julie.
I just want to let everyone know not to fear filling out these CARES Act applications. I know today I was talking to another gentleman about them. And it can be overwhelming, the forms, the amount of information that you need. I think if you call the city for some help, that they'll direct you to a person on staff. I'm not sure exactly who it would be, but I think if you do call the city, or call Jill Wonderside's department at Neighborhood Services, that they can help. Because, you know, some people are operating their small business as a very small business, and you don't always have the information. They ask for profit and loss statements. They ask for all kinds of things. And because you don't have it, I know people who have stepped back and said, I don't have all that. I can't do it. Therefore, they didn't get any money. So I just don't want people to fear that part of the process. I want, you know, you to step forward and just pick up the phone and ask for some help and you'll get the help that you need.
Good. Alex?
So it actually was very ironic that she came up and asked that or wanted to talk about that. Cause I just wanted to talk with Mike, Ed, and Dave about that. And I have an email drafted. I just haven't sent it out. But it was just kind of outlining a lot of those similar concerns. Just that I think what I, when I'm driving around, I'm seeing that happen a lot around curves. And I took some pictures of properties around town and stuff that I have concerns about. Just that if they do clear off their sidewalk and then the plows go around, or it doesn't even have to be a plow, you know what I mean, Ed? Like things can just pile up there. And they don't clear out the sidewalk or that corner to go to the crosswalk. And I mean, I know when I've been downtown, it happened just the other day. I was going to Marto for supper and I had to go out into the intersection because it was blocked off where the sidewalk meets. And so I would just, I think it's a big thing is education. And again, I outlined it in the email. I think a lot of it is just education and making sure that we're aware or thinking about that. Cause I have to plow through those things to try to get up onto the sidewalk and just, it becomes challenging. The other thing that, that Mike, it would more pertain to you and your crew, was just having to do it. There was a recent article, and again, I'll have that in the email, with the city of Des Moines. And some people with, with disabilities were growing really frustrated. I don't know if you saw it. Were really frustrated with the bus stops because what was happening was you have a cement landing pad that goes out to the bus, right? And I've done it. I mean, back when I used to ride the city bus quite often, the ramp would come out from the bus, but then you almost have to like shoot the gap or get a lot of, a lot of speed to try to get through on the sidewalk that gets you to that ramp. So in addition to clearing that area, just make sure there's a good landing pad for people to safely be able to go from the shelter into the bus.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I mean, our passengers are frustrated in the winter time because the drivers try and get as close as they can to the curb, depending on the snow piles, to lay that ramp on the curb. Otherwise, they pull to the next, past the intersection, so they can get into the street. And they try and accommodate the best they can with the snow conditions, but it is frustrating for them.
And they've done that. You know what I mean? Like I remember way back in the day, them doing that for me as well. But, and that's where the article in the journal, or in the register was just kind of highlighting that this group of advocates went out and shoveled all of them themselves because they felt the city wasn't doing a good enough job of clearing those paths. So I just wanted us to all think proactively. And again, in the email, I'm not blaming the plows, Ed. I don't, I don't want you to take it that way, I promise. And I'm not saying that we're not doing a good job. I just think we all need to think a little more proactively. Cause now, thank God, I'm blessed with the ability to drive around now myself and have a vehicle and transportation. But I always look at those intersections and it's like, I'd be stuck on that sidewalk if the business plowed their sidewalk.
And if the ridges get left there, then it becomes ice and it's frozen and it becomes impossible and-
Yeah. So just, it was awesome to see the three of you to at least just put it out there. And again, I'll follow up, but I appreciate it very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Moore?
Nothing further, Mayor.
The city attorney, as usual, is on top of things. It's 12 hours. The police department probably should have a little briefing on that with their officers. Not 24. Huh? It's 12 hours, you said, right?
Yes, it's 12.
Lisa was on top of it, or Nicole, or someone?
She sent me that. Nicole did. Nicole did.
Nicole is a lot.
They opened up the shots today, but if you didn't get on in about five minutes, you were not one of the first ones to get it. I don't know when they'll open up again. But I did have a lady complain to me and it's legitimate concern. So the next time Kevin's here, we need to ask the question. When you're 75 to 80 years old, a lot of people don't have computers. So how are they ever going to book an appointment?
That's what I already asked him.
And I think they can call down there, right? That was my understanding?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Got to do it on the computer. Isn't that right?
I would definitely follow up.
That's the only option they're providing right now. That's the only option they're providing, so, unless they're changing. Number two, I'd like the news media to drive by the Dollar General store, especially the Sioux City Journal with your photographer, and take a picture of it today on 18th and Pier Street. It looks a lot different than what was reported it was going to look like. It does have a brick facade front on it today. It's entirely different than a metal building. And I would encourage those that write for the journal to maybe look at the blueprints before you actually become overly critical of our planning process. Because part of the new planning and zoning rewrite was that we'd have to do those sort of things. And it appears to be working to me. I don't know. Maybe the journal has a different opinion. But I just think that we should be a little more proactive in doing investigative reporting before we report that kind. I realize it was an editorial comment, but at the end of the day, the paper's still responsible for what they put in there. I'll move, we adjourn. Second.
Daner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.